Well, I would like to...
Yes, it's like everything else.
Everybody suits today.
Isn't that awesome?
How did we do that?
Good weather brings us salad, Jim.
Except I've already heard I wish I was home in my garden from somebody, but hey.
Oh, I don't know who that was.
The President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, thank you. We all being aware that we are being taped by Westboro TV. And if you not appear, have anybody here for you to perform on?
No, we don't have anybody here for anything. Although I did invite our chief...
You're in the way in the answer.
I did invite our chief assessor this morning, but I haven't heard... I mean, I invited him weeks ago, but I haven't heard from him. So he may or may not appear.
Well, has everybody had an opportunity to read the meeting minutes from...
All right, so the minutes that you're voting on are the ones that were in your packet in your mailbox, because there were a couple corrections that I made to the original draft. It wasn't anything, it was like spelling of somebody's name.
And you spelled Renee Ebon.
I know, well.
Well, the insurance label.
Yeah, well, so I, yeah. So I made those corrections. So you're voting on the meeting minutes that are in your, in your packet.
Was there another one? Was it Ebon?
I can't remember. Oh, it was, it's a volunteer recognition breakfast, not a dinner.
What was that?
It's a volunteer recognition breakfast, not a dinner.
Four Asian ones.
Uh, four.
Oh, no dinner?
We used to do a lunch, but people are so busy. So we decided we'd just do a breakfast first thing and get it over with. And more people were coming and it was, it was all good.
That's exactly what mine says, May 22nd.
Yeah, well, this is the copy that I fixed that was in your thing. The copy that you originally got sent from Diane.
So I called this another thing?
Okay. I can't remember what else was...
Oh, I had volunteer recognition there.
Yeah, that was one of them. And then, oh, the thing about the insurance, that we have, we don't have insurance for volunteers.
Oh, because you said yes up there.
No, she said no.
Yeah, yes.
We used to have it, but we haven't had it for a very long time.
Okay, so...
I just fixed it to say no.
Okay. I'll just have to go and take draft off.
Oh, yeah, okay. I didn't know how to do that, so.
Oh, well, I'll have to know it all.
And it actually still is a draft until you vote to approve it, so.
Yes, but eventually I have to draft off.
I understand. I understand.
Does anybody see any changes, corrections that need to be made to the minutes? If not, may I have a motion to accept the minutes? And a second?
Second, a second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Hey, it's Dean, I wasn't here.
All right, it's that. Going to try to move along.
Because everybody wants to go stand in the middle of the park and watch the sun.
I want to. Drive me to...
I didn't watch it before, I don't really care, but...
So no...
No.
No, no. And John is not...
He's not here, but I told him one o'clock, so I don't know. So we can keep moving.
Okay.
So we sent a letter to SMOCK to the fuel assistance people. And last Friday afternoon, I had a meeting with them, they came here. It was very enlightening. I wish we'd known some of this information prior to all of this. It would have saved a whole lot of grief and aggravation going forward. They have promised me that they have hired a bunch of new staff. They're getting people trained. They did have a new telephone and computer system, and it wasn't right when it was first put in. They had a horrible time with it. They had sent out all of the recertification applications in August. And the courier that picked up the bins to go to the mail lost 11 bins of applications.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. I, you know what? My sister and brother-in-law worked for the post office for 35 or more years. And I told them that, and my sister's going, that's like, that's not, how is that even possible? And she used to do all the bulk mailing for Milford, so she, but she's like, I don't, like, I don't get how that's even possible. I can see maybe losing one or whatever, but 11?
How many applications?
There were probably close to 4,000 applica... I would say between 4,000 and 5,000 applications.
Lost.
Disappeared into the ether. Or in a drainage hole somewhere, I don't know, but anyway. You know, they understand the issues. Right now, they're, they're going through about 400 applications a week that they're certifying. They are, they had 900 applications that they were behind, so they figured in about two and a half weeks they'll be caught up, which is before the end of... They've extended the application process to May 10th. So they really are trying, I mean, I, I, they really are trying to get their act together. This was just a comedy of catastrophes. And it just kept getting worse and worse and worse. And I said that I, like I said to Jamie, I said, if you had told us all this ahead of time, like, explain to us, we get it, but people were calling us, yelling at us because they couldn't get ahold of you, and we did applications, we had no control. I mean, once we put the application in the mail and sent it off to Framingham, we have no control over any of that and where it lands from there. And she said they will do better next year. They're planning a couple trainings for the early fall, like they've done in the past. They didn't do any kind of training this year at all. So they're planning a couple trainings in the fall. They're trying to streamline some of their processes as they go along. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed, but I certainly believe that, you know, their heart's in the right place and they'll get it together and that things of people will be...
And they should have left a message on their phone and let people know just a brief summary of what's going on.
That would have been lovely.
Otherwise, you know, they're like, wow!
Because then we communicate with our top secret numbers that we're not allowed to give out to the public. And for a while, when things were getting answered and we were getting some results, but then all of a sudden it was like radio silence.
That can't be good.
Yeah, like, now what do we do? So, anyway, so they're, they're working on it, so.
I'm sorry, I'm still confused though. So what was the recovery process for the 4,000? Did they know which ones they were?
No, they didn't. And I asked her about that. She said she talked with the postmaster and head of, head of everything in Boston. The postmaster in Framingham really didn't care. He's like, well, there's nothing we can do about it. Like, okay.
So was it even an independent carrier?
It was a courier service that picked them up. So they weren't taking any responsibility for it. They said they took them to the post office. But then the post office is saying, well, we didn't lose them because we never had them. So, you know, he said, she said.
Finger pointing.
So, yeah.
I like what Daryl just did.
Exactly, exactly. So, anyway, but like she said, I can't do anything to fix the past, but I can make it better going forward.
Is the lady's phone?
Her name's Jamie Stockbridge, and she's the director of the...
Jamie's...
Stockbridge.
Stockbridge, like Stockbridge, yeah?
Yep, just exactly the same.
And J.A.I.M.E.?
J.A.M.I.E. She used to be in charge of the weatherization program. I said, girlfriend, what were you thinking? But she's, like I said, they're, they're, they are working to solve this mess.
Bad news and bad good news.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, it was sort of like initiation by a raging inferno, not just a fire.
Trial by fire.
Yeah.
Again, I'm still confused. So those 4,000 people whose applications were lost, they, they lost any...
Well, there was a, there was a way that we could pull the applications off the website. They opened that up to us. So what, what, well, Stephanie did it, but what she did was she'd go online and print, pull up the name, and then that would pull up the application, and we printed it here.
So do you know how many Westboro people were affected?
Probably half a dozen. I mean, some of them got theirs, but, you know, some didn't. Because some people came in with their stuff, they just wanted me to look at it, make sure it was all right. And they already had it, so. And then some people, we had to try to find them and pull them up and print them, so.
So there hasn't been a recovery?
From their computers, yeah, but not the... And I guess I, you know, a little, my concern is there's a lot of information on those applications. They aren't really... Yeah, like social security numbers and that kind of stuff, so I don't know what the... Yeah. Nope.
Well, Mr. Steinberg is not here.
I know, and I just...
We all signed the SMOCK that were present last month.
Everybody signed it.
Oh, what, every, oh, good.
I hunted you down until you came in and signed the letter.
I was one of them.
You were one, Marilyn was one, and I think Daryl was one, yeah.
Should I put delinquents in the line?
Also attended, yes.
Thank you, Alma, for saying that.
Yeah, wait till we get to the whole chat about Springwell and Baytown, that'll be more fun.
Okay, so, meeting.
Yes, it came and it's gone. There is a God. I got home earlier this year than I did last year. This year I got home a quarter after 11:00, last year I think it was 12:30. There was a question about our budget. Christie sort of explained it, but I know the man who asked the question, and he said, he, he said he'll come in and talk to me. It's not, it's not a big deal. It was interesting, to say the least. I think Guido can attest to that, it was...
Definitely interesting.
Yeah, definitely interesting. I'd rather not sit through one of those again, thank you very much.
The one article that we voted on here last month didn't get defeated, as we recommended.
But there were still like 25 or so person, people in that body as it kept voting for all of those. Which is their right to do that, I don't get that, but...
I saw a question from a senior recently, a couple of them. Well, you know, they didn't really want to go to the new one. Okay, they liked the old one because they liked driving up the tree line, driveway to the seed center. Sort of nostalgic thing, I don't know.
How, how did they answer that needs assessment questions?
Well, you're always going to get a different opinion.
I know, but we're going to be here for a while yet, so don't start, don't start bringing me bubble wrap and boxes.
Very positively, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, no.
I mean, we're bursting at the seams when we are, we have so many programs we can't do because they're all around the room. And even we had to stay here, we'd have to add on, spend a few million here and there, and so they kind of shut up.
Good.
Thank you for putting that.
Speaking of the town meeting, I understand that Mr., what's his name, who had these petitions that were filed on the town meeting? He's going to be at the selectman's meeting tomorrow night. I don't know what his agenda is, but...
I've seen the agenda, there's nothing all that controversial on it, I don't think.
Maybe it's a bit warm, so you don't know.
Could be.
You know, they're swearing in the new supervisors on the police department.
Are you saying more petitions are coming?
Pardon me?
More petitions are coming for the next meeting?
I don't know, but I'm going to the meeting tomorrow night.
Oh, okay.
Just a town meeting, just to say thank you for the annual report on behalf of the council that was published here. For those of you that haven't read it, it's a nice summary of 2023, the calendar year, report of the activities.
It's not usually a labor of love, but I realize that's probably the last one I'll ever write, so.
Well, well done.
Thank you. The only thing, I did make a mistake. I said Bagels with the Board of Selectmen is on Thursday, and it's on Tuesday, so. So for everyone out there in TV land, it's on... It's on the third, it's on the third Tuesday, not on Thursday.
And the COA secretary, do you have good news?
I have nothing to report, so I need to know how you want to proceed.
The first thought that pops into my head is let's send a letter to, how was the B downtown? The selectman, the town...
Manager.
Manager. And see what kind of response we get. I am at the point, I kind of feel that the longer the town can drag this out, the longer it's not going to get any results. But that is not, I'm not saying that is a reflection on you.
No, I have nothing to do with it. I would, I'm perfectly happy to hire somebody. Why don't I put a letter together and you can come in and sign it, or you and Guido can sign it, or whatever?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. But now the good news, when do you guys want to go for a tour?
I got a guy's one.
When do you guys want to go for a tour?
What are our rockers?
Whenever, whenever your little heart desires, because now the town has the keys, so. And I know the combination to the lock on the door, so whatever, but, yeah. We can go in a, in a couple groups or whatever, just no talking, no deliberating, no committing, just look at the building. Probably the up, some of the upstairs is going to start getting painted and stuff within the next week or so. But as long as you don't touch anything, you'll probably be okay.
Do you have certain days that you are available? Are you going with us?
I don't have to. I can have you, I can have Jim Stewart meet you down there, or Kim, or somebody. I'm going to be on vacation next week.
Oh, okay.
I'm running, I'm running away, I'm running all the way to Oxbridge.
Oh, goody!
I might get to Hopdell one day because I had lunch date with some friends, but other than that, I got, I clean my house.
And it's next week they want?
No, 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 you can go whenever. The town owns the building now, you can go Friday, you can go... And next week is school break, so.
People around.
Or we can, I can put something together for when I get back that following week, so.
Right now, I would technically move towards a farm.
All right, so why don't I find, I'll talk to Jim and find out when we can get in there? Or Kim, whoever wants to do that. I'll put together a couple of, I'll put together a morning and an afternoon, and we'll send an email out, except I'll call Nancy. And we can, you can let me know when you'd rather go in the morning or the afternoon.
Okay, I'm going to be, I might not be able to attend that, depending on when it is, because I leave two weeks to go out to visit my son.
All right, so you're going to get a private tour? Oh, yeah, no, you're going to get a private tour when you get back.
Oh, okay, that sounds good, okay.
Good, okay. Kristen and...
I have a, I haven't met him on the, on the old business that I...
Oh.
Appears we've gone into new business, so.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to bring up a subject on old business, if I may. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I know from the minutes that Need, that Guido brought up the, the question of hiring a deputy director. And Kim apparently indicated that the search process has not begun because notification hasn't been received. So I think Alma has to give notice to the town or whoever you give it to.
I will, when I'm ready.
Well, that doesn't solve the problem of, of getting a...
One of my intentions for next week when I'm on vacation is to go to County Retirement, have a little chat with them, but the town will have my notice. It's sufficient time to do whatever it is they're going to do, so.
How long do they usually need for that kind of search, do you know?
I don't know.
So we don't know?
It takes a while.
It takes a while, but, yeah.
I was surprised at how quickly, though, they did it since we're intent, and that was, what, two months?
Yeah, but that's the school committee.
I was really very angry at the way that subject came up at our, was it our last meeting? There was no need for that. And I really have a problem with the way it was handled. And Alma was put on the spot. She handled it gracefully, but I did not feel it was appropriate at the time to do what they did. And I don't understand. I kind of have a feeling that they're already planning, shall we say?
For my departure?
And I believe it's very premature.
All right, let's move on then, so we're not...
Yeah.
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I can't comment.
I will give my notice in plenty of time for the town to do what they need to do within their timeframe. I just have to figure out what I'm going to do first, so. But it definitely won't be, it'll probably be sometime in November or December when I will be gone. But I feel like I can't just, I don't know, maybe it's me and maybe nobody cares, but I feel like I just can't leave here with everything that goes on here in the fall without having gone through some of the, you know, the outward stuff is one thing, but the underneath stuff that's got to be done in the meantime, without going through that with the staff. So I, I will, I will be, by January 1st, I promise I won't be here anymore at all. I'll be standing in my dining room window with my cocoa, watching it snow, so, there you go.
I do that now.
Yeah, well, it's because you're retired, but I will be soon too, so, anyway.
That was one of my first things after retirement, have coffee in the morning, watch all the cars go by.
Going to work.
And then having lunch on my patio at lunchtime.
I'm in a condo, I like watching the snow plows come. You're also Linda, right?
I'm not a big fan of snow.
No, so without a shovel, yeah.
You are right, and those four people are out there in a bad storm, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, shoveling and plowing and... And do you have another cup of coffee? I don't really pick up the shovel anymore.
Nope. My shovel stays on my deck till my birthday, so, anyway. So it, I will, I will do what is appropriate and what's best for me in the meantime, so.
And so you should. So Linda, let's move on and get on.
Okay, so...
I don't think you finished the community center walkthrough thing.
Well, what I'm going to do is I'll figure, I'll talk to Jim Stewart, or I'll talk to Kim and find out when they'll be available that week. And then I'll set up a morning time and an afternoon time. We'll shoot everybody an email, you can pick which time you want to go and...
Okay.
Okay, he did finish things. Sounds good.
All righty, and Nancy will arrange for your own personal tour. So, last Tuesday, no, the Tuesday before that, I had a meeting with the directors and the outreach people, and I didn't have my outreach person with me because she was gallivanting around Europe, yeah. Anyway, I, Westboro, Southboro, Marlboro, Northboro, and Hudson, there were five of us there. And we met with the CEO from Springwell, which is the agency that merged with Baytown. Because none of us have been particularly happy with the lack of services that we've been getting from them for, you know, it's been almost two years since they took over and it's...
Excuse me, Alma, as a new resident, what is Springwell and...
It's the, it's the state-funded home care agency that provides services for this area. There's 13, I believe there's 13 areas that... Although I'm still convinced the legislature didn't have a map when they drew them, but that's not anything new. Anyway, so because, since this happened, we've got people who have been on waiting lists for literally years to get homemakers. We've had, the only service we can tell that they were able to really provide was Meals on Wheels, and I had an issue with that too, that got her kind of upset, but I really didn't care at that point. And so we met with, her name's Trish Smith. She gave us a lot of information. We asked for some specific information, and she didn't have it with her. And then she emailed us, but that wasn't what we asked for either, so. We asked for numbers, like how many clients do you have in Westboro? How many clients do you have in Westboro on the waiting list? We heard a lot about confidentiality and procedures, which means nothing to me when you've got seniors at home that are not getting services. I told her that I took exception to the... So I, you all know I have a scanner in my office, so I know what's going on all the time. And I've heard more than one occasion where somebody who is on Meals on Wheels didn't answer the door for their Meals on Wheels. But it's not at 10:30 or 11:00 or 11:30 when they're doing that. It's at 3:30 in the afternoon, which means if that person's on the floor, they've been there since who knows when. And I said, it really bothers me when I hear these calls because they're so late, and why can't we get the call from the volunteer saying, you know, Mr. Washburn didn't answer the phone? So my immediate, you know, response would be, I would call the officer of the day at the fire station to make sure that he didn't go out in the ambulance since noon time yesterday when he got his meal. And if he didn't, then either the fire department or the police, depending upon who wasn't off the charts busy like they always are, would go and do a wellness check. Well, not all fire departments and police departments are willing to do that. I said, well, mine is. And I really, I said, I don't want to hear another one of those calls. If you guys can't get to it till then, then call my office and we'll take care of it from here. I said, this is not acceptable. I said, I do not ever want to find out that somebody laid on the floor because nobody came for five, four or five hours, and, you know, it, it, well, you all know how I am, so, anyway. Well, it's procedure.
I thought that we coordinated the volunteers, aren't they all Westboro people?
But their instructions from Springwell are they to call the Springwell office and leave a message or something.
And not to call here. Can we ask them to do both?
Yep.
Seems like...
Yeah, because I don't, I don't want to have, I don't want to have that happen again. And it just happened a few weeks ago, that's what kind of put it in my mind for this meeting. We're meeting again on May 14th. Kendra from Northboro very graciously has agreed to host us, and she's going to feed us lunch that day too, so, it's all good. The only, the only really good part of that whole day was that we got apple, hot apple crisp before we left. I think that was to make us feel better, but I'm not terribly encouraged by all of this. I realize there's employment issues everywhere, and I specifically asked her if they were making contacts and trying to put contracts out with people out on this side of the world. She never really answered my question. Well, she did, but it's like, well, yes, because I know if you look in the home health book, we have 22 home health agencies that cover Westboro, so. You know, I, like I said, it was, it was very frustrating. We'll see what happens at the next meeting, if she comes with the information that we've asked her for, but...
So is the issue with Springwell mostly the delivery of meals?
No, the issue with Springwell is the lack of delivery of services. The only thing they really can deliver is Meals on Wheels.
Because they recently called me after my March Madness. I made contact with them, and they called me, and they said they were... I made contact with them and they called me and they said they would have somebody available.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, must be special.
So how long is that? I mean, are they actually providing this service?
No, no, I, I just had, I had to set something up to, in case I needed it. So I made contact with them and they said, you know, it's a call, we'll have somebody available.
Well, we have a man, we have a lady over at Treetop Park who finally got a homemaker after about 14 months. And we have a man over at Fountainhead, is that called now? Arrive? He's still waiting and it's been over a year, well over a year.
Really? Because she gave no indication that there was a 12-month span.
Is that for homemaking services or was that for?
Caregiving type?
Oh, okay, maybe that's different. And then we asked, how often do the, do the case managers have to visit with the clients? I almost fell off my chair because I had been a case manager for three years before I came here back in nineteen, early 1980s. And when I left, I had 106 clients and we were required to see them, some of them every week, some of them every quarter, some of them every month, no. Once a year, twice a year, once every, and it's like, well, that's why nobody knows who you are because they know that, you know, Debbie is their homemaker, but they have no idea where she comes from and they have no connection to the case manager. And, and they, they don't know, it's like, well, does she come from Springwell? I don't know. Like, they don't know who it is because there's no contact. And yes, I get the whole COVID thing, but we're kinda past that, so let's, you know, how, how can you have no connection with your clients? I personally find that not particularly good form, but.
COVID seems is an excuse for everything still.
Well, yeah. And, and there's, there's no need to add any more, but anyway.
Didn't they used to have monthly meetings when it was Bay Path that we would send a representative?
Yeah, but we weren't invited to have a board member on this Springwell board. Not all, but not all of the, I think only two or three of the 13 communities that made up Bay Path were invited to.
Two of the 13?
I think so.
And how were those two chosen?
I have no idea. They weren't from here, so I don't know.
Am I remembering right that we used to have a, one of our members here go every month?
And I forget who else. Over the years, there've been several people that have done that, yeah.
Yeah, is that something we can ask them about again, is to, you know, could we send a member to their meetings?
That's something I can, we can bring up at the next meeting. Can you expand your board and make sure you've got somebody from all the communities?
Could we go, you know, send them?
I think you could probably go to the meetings. I believe they're at their offices in Waltham, or Needham, Needham maybe?
Yeah, that was the other thing they moved that part of the merger.
Well, they still have the offices in Marlboro.
Still.
But I'm not sure how much is.
It was, I do attend their meetings even if it's not a board, you know, voting position.
All right, let me find out some of that. There was also some discussion about seeing if these five communities could go to Worcester Home Care, like if they adopt us because we're obviously not getting services. And that, that discussion will continue, so.
Was that Worcester what?
Worcester Home Care. Worcester Elder Services Incorporated. Anyway, but on to a much happier subject. We went, we've now gone over to Assabet a couple times for their luncheon programs. They're actually going Wednesday for the buffet. I think there might be one seat left. Everybody has been very happy to go. They say the food is awesome, the kids are adorable. You went, didn't you?
No, I was sick.
Oh, you were sick, okay. Anyway, it's been a very positive response, so we'll go. We're also getting our birthday cake from them this month, which is significantly cheaper than BJ's. Oh, by the way, you won't be picking up a cake. Seriously, a lot cheaper from them, a full sheet cake. I think it's $30, so that's.
Thirty-five. I think I heard thirty-five.
Well, it's still better than $49.99, yeah.
You know, which Wednesday at lunch is it next week?
It's, it's, no, it's the 10th, and then the one in May is on the 8th. And I believe the, it's $15 for your meal and then tax and tip for the kids.
They do, I've been over there many times in the past. But yeah, the meal's always right on par. Kids are dedicated, committed, however you wanna say it, to this program.
This is the one, Nancy, going towards Menden, that one?
No, that's Placston Valley Tech. Assabet's in Marlboro.
Oh, Assabet.
Right off of Tuna Beach.
Assav Vocational Technical High School.
They also have a similar program at the Worcester High Tech.
Yeah, I think they all do. I've been to the one at Valley Tech a couple times and the food was good, so the kids were, the kids were good.
That's where, that's where our students go.
Yeah.
From Westboro?
Huh?
Always kind of Worcester.
No, I, I do, yes.
Yeah, I think all the vocational schools do those kind of, some of them have beauty salons and some of them have, you know, other services, so. Auto body stuff.
Can it all change while you're at lunch?
Sounds good to me. Somebody told me I could have my card details out here while I'm at work. That's very tempting. Anyway. All right, the shredding date, once again, it is on Monday, April 29th, from 10:00 to 1:00 here at the Senior Center. We've got, now you've got, you know, three weeks to clean out the drawers and the the covers and the closets and all the boxes of paper. Last time, I mean, they were winded up at eight, at nine, 9:30 last time. The truck didn't even get here till five minutes at 10:00. The police will also be here to collect medication. Over the counter and prescription medication. You don't have, you can bring it in the bottles it's in, it doesn't matter, it's incinerated, so. And the fire department will be here collecting the needles, but they have to be in improved sharps containers, so. Do not bring them here in a tied bottle or a ginger ale bottle, yes.
I noticed this year it's like, no plastic bags, just put your stuff in your.
Well, because people bring the plastic bags and the, the plastic bags can't go through the shredder.
Right.
Just like you can't put plastic bags with your recycling at home, so we're trying to get people to either put your stuff in plastic ba, I mean, in paper bags or in boxes.
Because then they just tip them over.
Yeah, so. So. The AARP driving class will be on the 30th. If you have not ever taken this class, it is well worth the four hours or so to do it. It's $20 if you're an AARP member, 25 if you're not, and if you have United Healthcare, it's free, but you have to obviously bring your cards with you, but it's a great class. Our instructor is just the best. Her name's Helen Easton. We've had great, and we provide lunch. We've had great attendance in all of these events and I can't let people know enough. I'm almost thinking I wanna take it that day because I'm senior driver now, so.
It's inside, correct?
Yeah, it's in here. It's not, yeah.
Isn't it like 10 to 3:00 or?
Yeah.
Like five hours?
It's 10 to 3:00. There's an hour break for lunch in the middle and we, we always provide lunch. And like I said, it's really, if you're still driving, it's, I, I've heard some of it when I've come in just to check and see how things are. It's like, oh, I never, you didn't teach me that in driver, in 1974.
So it's strictly classroom type?
But she's got a lot, it's, there's a lot of stuff up on the screen. She's got DVDs and there's a little test at the end that you can't fail, but.
And if you don't already have it, a lot of the auto insurance is given this guy.
Yes, and it also will help with your auto insurance. Some, some companies, some companies, not all of them. So, and like I said, it's well worth your time. Getting ready to retire talk is not me because we're done with that topic. On May 15th, I have someone coming from Blue Cross Bushield. They've been here before. This is for people who have not yet retired and are, that are thinking about it and how you, how you, your health insurance and Medicare and how all that works and what you need to apply for. We had a couple people, have had a couple people in the last few months that, you know, I'm 68, I'm thinking of retiring and I haven't done anything yet. It's like, oh, did you apply for Medicare when you were six? No, I haven't done anything yet. Oh my God. Yeah. So anyway, so that, and it's not a sales talk. Brian is from Blue Cross Bushield. It's not a sales talk. This is strictly information. Like I said, we've done it in the past and have had pretty good audience participation, so. If you've got kids that are thinking about retiring and wanna find out, it gets more complicated all the time, so. That much I do know. The Volunteer Recognition is the 22nd. Mary Ellen's working on the invitations of, 22nd of May, so you should be getting that and you'll be home by then.
Oh, yeah, I'm home May 6th, yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
They don't have to have a special breakfast, but.
And it's on a Wednesday policy, you can come. It's not on a Tuesday or a Thursday.
It'll be 25th of May, 28th of May?
22nd of May. And then on the 28th, May 28th in the afternoon, the staff will be, will be at the fire station getting our CPR recertifications. I know, our three years is up. It's time to do it again.
What CPR was?
CPR. Cardial pulmonary resuscitation.
It says CPR.
Yeah, but it's.
Does it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Also the date on the top. It's not they provide.
See, nobody picked that up even in the town hall.
I did.
I thought I, well, you would. See, there's nobody, um.
So is that something that we can go to also, or is it only for your paid staff here?
That was for just my staff, but I'm gonna talk with, we did a class, a couple, we did a class pre-COVID that was open to anybody. Because there's 14 of us that do this, it's kinda, yeah. So, but I'm trying to talk to him about maybe doing a class late in, sometime in June. The other thing I'm working on is I'm trying to get a class, you know, a presentation together about the whole trash, how you should go recycling and all of that.
Yeah, and I'll go on a community advocate this weekend.
I don't understand the thing that I read in the paper the other day.
Well, you know what? Neither did I, so. But we will be selling the bags here at the Senior Center, so if you.
And how's that gonna work? Have to hire a different person?
No, you just come in and say, can I buy some trash bags? And we pull them out of the box and you hand us money and we put it in the envelope and, I mean, it's not. I just thought it would be a good thing if we had them here, so.
So they, they're gonna close the Harveys to drive-ins?
No, no.
No, no. It'll still be open for drive-in, but you can only drop off bags from the town that you're paying for.
Yeah, because they're trying to keep track of the tonnage.
They're trying to reduce it really, but yeah.
It's kinda like North, you see all the green bags out there on a certain day.
Have you been to the dump lately?
I've never been to the dump, so.
I wanna tell you, they have, when I went last week, the belt that you throw the trash in.
It's been broken for about a month and a half.
At least, and the trash is piled so high and they've got those.
Bins.
Yeah, and it's hard, you know, it's hard, like I have trouble because my shoulders are compromised trying to get my trash bags into those. Over those. And you know what I'm thinking? There must be tons of rats there with all that.
There are.
Stuff. I don't know what the solution is, but it's a mess.
Well, Tuesday, they were all empty. They, they must have done it Tuesday morning. I went there about noon time on Tuesday and all the bins were, you know, only very little stuff in it from that morning.
Was the belt empty too?
But, no.
No.
The belt is still broke and that was.
So they must be waiting for whatever.
Well, I think there was a fire with it. I remember hearing that. I just, I don't know. I mean, I know.
Hasn't been working.
Trash is a very emotional issue in this town. Yeah.
What's gonna happen to people that have their trash in the dumpster?
Nothing.
Nothing, no change. If you have the bins out, you know, you put the bin out once a week or two of them, no change. This is for the, this is the pay as you throw land going into service soon.
Yeah.
But for everybody else.
So Alma, the bags that are gonna be here at the Senior Center, are they comparable to, unacceptable to the dump?
That's what, that's the only kind of, yeah. I mean, they'll, they'll be giving them to us to sell. We won't be. I think that, you know, we've discussed this at department head meetings and stuff too. I mean, I think originally it was thought that maybe they do like door-to-door pickup like they do where I live. But they pulled out of that and I, and I wondered if part of it had to do with the fact that they don't have enough people to like take on another town. Because I know a lot of times that I'll get a phone call Tuesday, my trash gets picked up every other Tuesday. So I'll get a phone call when I get home Tuesday saying that, you know, we weren't able to pick up your trash today, but please leave it out until tomorrow, whatever. Because they just couldn't get there, so I, I wondered, but I could be totally off base, but, I mean, to try to collect trash at all the houses.
You know, Westboro would be quite a feat, so.
Well, that's what they do now. They, they collect from almost many, many houses.
Yeah, but I, I, you know, there's still a lot of people that go to the dump.
There are a lot of people that go to like the dumpster in the back of a church packing. Throw it in. One day I caught a man. He said, what do you want me to do? I said, take it back out. Take it to the dump.
If you already made it downtown, what's another three minutes to the dump?
You need a sticker.
Yeah, I mean, and there's, you still have to have a sticker, but it'll be significantly cheaper than they are now.
What do you know, it's not two years now. It's every year you have to get a sticker. Like why?
I don't know. Not, not my party. I didn't make the rules, so I don't know.
The seniors used to get a discount, but I don't know if there'll be a discount upon what they're reducing it to.
I don't know, I'm not sure.
I used to have a senior discount.
Right.
At the half price.
I'm trying to get somebody to come here to talk about that sometime next month, so.
That'd be a good idea.
Yep.
Because it's going to be effective when May?
July 1st. All right.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Floor cleaning. Can you give us a status sometime?
Jim, yes, there is a status. Jim got a quote. It was significantly higher than both of us thought it was gonna be, but I'm not surprised. And he was supposed to, he was gonna check with them because I gave him two weekends in May that we didn't have anything else scheduled here except the Sunday morning meeting because they need to come in here around noon time on Friday and move furniture and stuff, so I have to have everybody out of here until Monday morning. But I gave him two weekends in May, the 3rd, 4th and 5th, and the 17th, 18th and 19th, that there weren't other things in here. And he was gonna check with them and find out which weekend they wanted to come, so it will be done before the Volunteer Recognition breakfast.
To do what? What are they?
Stripping wax.
No stripping wax.
They haven't been done since before COVID.
Still okay?
No, they're not.
Honestly, you're gonna get sick from it.
No.
You smell, yeah.
I mean, Wayne washes them, but you know, we can only do so much when, right? Wax is all made of that, but it is, it'll be. Wax is all made of that, but it is, and I'll be.
So you mentioned Wayne. This weekend, Saturday, as you know, was a particularly busy day here.
Yes, it was.
Had the veterans breakfast in the morning that took the whole morning. And then we had the Boy Scout spaghetti dinner that took our afternoon, you know, they came in after we left and, anyway, my point is, no, at no time during that, the whole day was there a custodian here to, you know, to, there was staff here in the morning. Stephanie was here, myself, and so, you know, we could handle emergencies that came up. For example, someone sat down with a big full cup of coffee and immediately it went all over the floor. And all over the table, on his leg. Fortunately, it wasn't that hot that he got burned because that was my first concern. And, you know, we don't really have anyone here, well, like I said, we did have Stephanie in that case, but a staff person that could handle an emergency that might come up when you have people here.
Well, it was my intention to be here, but I had a little bit of an emergency with my mother, so.
Again, so general point, and then the same thing in the, the afternoon. I came for the dinner, but I came at 5:00 when it was served. And there was no one, as far as I know, from a town official point of view to just sort of be here in case of an accident.
Well, when they fill out the forms with the town hall, they have to request custodial staff here.
Who do?
Whoever rents, whoever rents out the hall. So when the Boy Scouts filled out the form, they probably didn't check.
But if you reserve the high school cafeteria, it's an automatic thing. You need their cook and their custodian there and you pay for it.
Yeah.
But my point is.
Well, you pay for the custodian to be here and I get that. I have to say that the, the Boy Scout fathers have cleaned that kitchen better than anybody I've ever seen in my life.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that.
No, no.
Just the point though of someone being in the building that can handle an emergency situation, that's really where I was going. You know, if somebody needed to call and answer, I'm sure it would have all been done by somebody, especially the Boy Scout leaders who know how to handle stuff like that.
They did a fine job of mopping the floor.
I filled in for Wayne there.
Yeah, I had to call, I got a text from Stephanie later in the afternoon that it was freezing in here, so I called.
In the morning, certainly. I think it was the weekend and the heat doesn't come on automatically.
No, it doesn't.
But that's, it warmed up.
I was going to say, a lot of warm souls in the building.
So the, the standard policy at town hall for the use of this building on weekends does not require a custodian to be here to.
Generally not, it kind of depends on what the program is, but generally it doesn't. Like the garden club and the, the square dancing and all that, they, they just pick up the key at the town hall.
Where was all the trash, did they put it out in the?
The Boy Scouts did a great job with that, yeah, they put it out there.
Maybe one of the dads could, I mean, was it a CPI issue, one of the dads could have.
They did a great job, that, that, no problem with that.
And maybe one of them was even a firefighter, who knows?
No, but one of them is a selectman.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure this is a emergency for the Boy Scouts.
Yep.
And they'll call 911.
And the fire department maintains it.
They're not here alone.
They change the pads every year and thank God we've never had to use it.
Yeah, things like that. And if I didn't know where the mop was or the closet was locked, I mean.
Not talking about.
They mopped it on the floor with the big.
With the big towel, sure.
Well, we still do have the red phone out there that just connects to the 911 system.
Where is that?
Right inside the front door.
Oh, I know.
It's right there on the right, right inside the front door. The A D is there, the stop, the bleed is there and then the bat phone is there to call.
The bat phone?
Yeah. It's red.
But the stuff was very good though, they did a good job. I, I think most of the tables were full, maybe it's in the hand now, like 60 people requesting to be there and they look full to me. It was, it was great.
Good.
The brownie was, I took one brownie, it was delicious, but really chocolatey.
Those are the best.
I still have to, I still have to work on the rest of the brownies, too much to eat all. It was very good.
I can be, all right. Just don't forget next Tuesdays, the supporters are doing their antique appraisal thing.
Oh, yeah.
Next Tuesday afternoon, I think, yeah, 1:00.
So how much in a month vary us to be present?
I got nothing, I'm on vacation. I'm, I'm, depending on the weather, I may be in Windsor, Connecticut that day with my sister, so we'll see. Oh, no, we're going to do genealogy stuff, which bores me to tears.
Interesting. Are there any other items need to come before the board at this time?
Yes, Nancy, last month, Ellen requested some assistance in the medical transport, transportation.
Oh, okay.
There is, those two sheets you gave us.
Yep.
So Nancy and I kind of put it at the end a couple times and I have journal summer over in your notes.
Okay.
I can pass on.
Well, I figured we'd do that next month.
Oh, next month, okay.
Well, because I was expecting Jonathan today, so.
Oh, okay.
It'll be on the agenda next month.
You don't want to do it since they have?
Well, for those who want to.
Well, no, because it's not on the agenda and it's getting to be close to 2:00, so.
Oh, that's right.
I move, we adjourn. I second it. That's okay with you, Linda?
Who seconded it?
I did.
Almost in favor?
Aye.
That's all right, because I have to be with the town hall at 3:00.